Okay, cool. So we're gonna get started. Welcome to Civics 201 Session 5. We are learning more about our government and we want to learn about engaging with the school board. Today, we happen to have two representatives from local school districts with us. We have Arthi Singh, who is the AISD trustee-at-large and board secretary, and Heather Sheffield with Eames ISD trustee place six. So thanks for joining us, ladies, and thank you for joining us attendees. If you have any questions, feel free to place them in the chat box, or we'll be making use of the Q and A through this session. My name is Jennifer Dahlke, and I'm the Community Relations Director for the Austin Area League of Women Voters. For those of you who don't know, the League of Women Voters is open to everyone. We're a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, and we influence public policy through education and advocacy. You might know us from our voter registration services, Get Out The Vote activities, Voters Guide, voteforonewomen.org, our candidate forums, high school education and registration policy presentations, and of course, our civics education programs. So today, we wanted to talk a little bit about who makes decisions about public education. So this is happening at all levels of government. The federal government is responsible for allocating 8% of our total education funds. We have state level, the governor, the Texas ledge, and the State Board of Education are responsible for allocating education funding and making decisions. And here in our local level, we have the school board trustees, who are responsible for things like hiring, firing superintendent, setting their goals, working on and voting to pass district policies, determining on what funding, how funding is allocated within the district budget. They vote on and improve on programs and curriculum. They determine bond needs, and they vote to add bonds onto the local ballots. They help set tax rates, or property taxes, and help deal with other legal matters. So there's a lot that's happening here at the local level. School boards are elected from communities. They're there to make decisions about educational programs based on community needs, values, and expectations. They're entrusted by the public to translate the needs of students into policies, plans, and goals that will be supported by the community. So they have a lot of power, and you have a lot of power to put them in office. So as I said before, these are all the decisions that a school board is involved in making. For those of us who, for those of you who joined us this fall, we had a lengthy discussion on the basics of things that showed up on our ballot this fall. We'll likely to see bits and pieces of these once again. And school board elections, very important. And we'll have a little bit of information from Heather and Arthi about how they got into their current roles as school board trustees. So AISD, we have nine elected school board trustees. There are seven districts and two at-large, and they're in staggered four-year terms that are unpaid. So Arthi, can you tell us a little bit more about AISD?
Happy to. So you're correct, we do have nine trustees. And so all of the trustees, you know, vote on everything that, you know, that affects all students in the district, of course. And did you want me to talk a little bit, Jennifer, about sort of our role and the kinds of things that we do at this point? Or should I save that for later?
Um, well, let's go ahead and we'll switch over to Heather, and then you guys can go back and forth on what you guys are doing in both parts of the district, since it's a large chunk of Austin area.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you.
So we also have the Eames Independent School District with their seven school board trustees, staggered three-year terms, also unpaid. And in Eames ISD, the trustees represent the entire district and vote on things affecting every student, unlike in Austin where it's by zone. Bye.
That's right. We each represent every single one of our approximately 8,200 kiddos. So it is different in that I have a lot of coffees with a lot of people.
Excellent. So let's see if we have... Okay. Um, so yeah, if we can talk a little bit about what, why school board elections matter. If you guys can give your take on why we should be focusing on the school boards. And you know, especially in the Eames case, it's not just, you know, your little slice of the district, your rep is for all the districts. And Arthi, you're an at-large member, meaning that you aren't technically tied to like a sliver of land.
That's right. Yeah, so AISD has about a little under 80,000 students. We have about 12,000 staff members and a budget of one and a half billion dollars. So it's, so yes, the trustees have a huge responsibility. And, you know, sometimes people think, oh, school board, that's just kind of like a glorified PTA or whatever. It's not. It is a very serious governance role. We have a huge responsibility. There's a lot of legal things we have to comply with. And, and you're right, I think the very first bullet that you've got here, we do, we are so accessible as school board trustees. Many of us are our parents in the district. So you'll see us at school meetings and at HEB and all over the place. So we're super accessible, I think, for the most part. And we are, like, I do feel like our constituents can have a real influence on what happens at the school board, simply because we have an opportunity to listen to you. You know, wherever we are, there's so many ways. It's not always super formal. I do a lot of coffee, well, I haven't done that many coffees lately, but I can't wait to resume those. But I would say that, I can just tell you, like, recently, one of the biggest things a school board does is they hire and fire a superintendent. And we just went through that process of hiring a new superintendent last year, just when COVID was starting. And so that was a really daunting task, and it really tested us in terms of like how we were going to, we had to kind of get the most important input from our constituents and our community at a time where it was most difficult to reach them. You know, and, but I gotta hand it to the team. Like, we really did do a lot with Zoom and everything. And in some ways, we actually may have gotten more feedback than we would have otherwise because people started getting accustomed to the online communications. And so for me, it really did make a difference, hearing what was really important. We went through a really rigorous process of identifying, like, what were the criteria that were most important to our community? In our next superintendent, the thing that came out on top was they had to be an educator, somebody who had experience teaching the classroom. We didn't want necessarily, like, you know, a business executive. Wanted somebody who knew education, knew our students. You know, there are a lot, like, special education experience was really important. And so like, there are all these criteria that came from the community. And so it is, I'm so grateful to the league. First of all, I should have started with that. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, league, for always shining a light on school boards. Because we're sort of, we're forgotten sometimes. We're not like a very sexy governing body. But, you know, it impacts what I think is most precious to us, and that's our children. So, so yeah, that's just one example, you know, with the superintendent selection. There's so many big things, so many big decisions that we have. And I'm sure Heather has some that she can share as well.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Question in the chat here. Question about which is better, separate districts or the at-large system? And I mean, both are kind of in play in Austin here in various places. And sometimes it has to do with the size of the area that you're kind of carving up into bits. For those of you who aren't aware, basically, there's this little spot on your, on your voter registration card is tied to geography. And as with city council districts, school districts are also kind of sized accordingly as to who owns what. But it's not necessarily always population-based. You know, in Austin, you know, we have like a chunk of land that's jurisdiction for like the city of Austin. But it wasn't necessarily decided that like Eames was also kind of separated off. Like, the districts are kind of spread apart. Like Austin is Lugerville ISD, Austin ISD, depending on where you live within that space. So it's complicated. And the districts, districts get to choose, as far as their charter goes, how the board is developed, correct? If you're on mute, Heather, I think you're gonna...
Yeah, sorry, my internet is being kind of funky. So if I have an issue, I will come back. I'm sorry. Yeah, I do believe that that is in each different district's charter to figure that out. I don't know how that was decided for Eames ISD.
Got it. Yeah, so it's similar to how we talked about...
Especially since our school district has been... Hear me? Sorry.
We're breaking up a little bit towards then.
Yep. And so, yeah, so I don't know exactly when that was decided or how that was decided for Eames in particular. But I know that it is different in every single district, and it's vastly different. And even the way that people are elected based on the majority vote, or if it's, you know, they have five different people running and there are three seats, then, you know, so it's different everywhere. So I think that's one of the big takeaways, I would say. If you want to get involved in your school board elections, figure that out for your individual ISD.
And the same is when we had our last chat about the city and how, you know, their jurisdictions are kind of broken up. It all happens in a charter. So each school district does have a charter, and that's likely where all these rules are broken down. And if anybody was to influence a change in that, you would have to kind of hop in and, you know, propose it during a charter amendment period.
Yeah, although I will say that I think, if you ever look at school district boundaries, I swear those people were drunk or gerrymandering or something. Sometimes they make no sense. I taught at a school district that the front door, like, I could have thrown a rock and hit the back fence of another school district's house, you know? So I don't know who made those either.
Yeah. I'll say in Austin, I really like having the districts. I think it's an equity issue. You know, we, that way, we know we have representation from all parts of the city. When you look at voter turnout, the highest voter turnout in Austin tends to be West Austin. So like, if we, if we didn't have this, you know, our districts divided up the way we have, I'm afraid we wouldn't have trustees that represented the whole city. So I think, you know, I think Eames, and I think there are other districts that are probably, were probably works to have each district doing everyone because maybe they're smaller or, you know, whatever. It doesn't make sense to break it up. You know, they've got one high school in Eames. So I mean, here, you know, we've got many more. So I think that's, I really like it. And especially as an at-large trustee, I've got, now, I actually live in southwest Austin, but I have to make sure that, like, I am representing everybody. And sometimes, honestly, like, I'll vote on things in a way that doesn't necessarily help my neighborhood, but it definitely helps another area, another part of town. And sometimes, like, I get criticized for that for my neighbors. You know, like, that's just part, and I gotta explain, like, well, I'm an at-large trustee. I'm not just representing, like, District 5. And so it's this constant conversation. So I really am glad that we still have, like, a couple of at-large seats that are kind of looking at everything. Although I, I do think all the trustees care about the whole district, but we're not like super, I'm never like super advocating for like my part of town. It does allow me to be a little bit more objective, I think. And I'd probably say the same for my other at-large trustee, Lugo. So, yeah.
Got it. So there was a question that came in with regards to where principals, the school principal fits in to the decision-making. A specific question is, do principals continue to have autonomy? If so, what does that mean or look like? So within your structure?
Take that. Um, really, trustees don't have anything to do with principals, really, because our job as trustees is to basically oversee the bigger picture of the district and to work with the superintendent. But the superintendent is the one who's in charge of staffing and making sure that the day-to-day operations go as planned. So if you're asking about our role as a trustee with a principal, that's not our job, really.
Okay, and then we had another question about why is it that we have some principals who say no to parents when they want to invite a school board member to a school?
And Eames ISD school board members are at the schools constantly, so I'm guessing that that's not my question. Sorry.
Um, hi TA. I see your question. Yeah, so I would say that people always have access, like, direct access to school board members. And so, you know, ideally, yeah, they should be going through the principal. Like, when I get invited to a campus, I always ask them, can you please send in an email to me and copy your school principal? So I know that they know that this is happening and have them respond to the email chain so I know that they're, they know I'm coming. And that's really just to help them manage whatever it is they need to manage. And if a school principal consistently doesn't want a trustee to be there, that would probably be a situation where I might bring it up to the superintendent and be like, by the way, this principal doesn't seem to want a trustee there. Do you know why? Can you shed some light on this? Is that something that maybe should be cause for concern, whatever? That has never happened to me. But, you know, I would always encourage parents to just reach out directly to trustees if they find like they're not getting, they're not able to get through their principal, go to trustees, and then we can kind of figure out what, what the issue is. But I would never go to a campus if the principal didn't, like, bless it. Because they have a very difficult job, and I don't want to make it harder for them.
And that tells nicely into my next slide, which is how do we get to know you? Like, I personally, I don't have many children, so I don't have much interaction with, like, individual schools. So when I am, you know, learning about things at the local level, it's usually interacting at the district level. So I know, I know how to find you guys. Like, I've signed up for Office Mailing List, I've followed social media. And, you know, I follow you guys in the news. And candidate forums are also a great place to learn about, like, what your platforms were going in, kind of like, you know, see where we're at. But how do we, how do we get to know you guys? Like, what is the best way to contact the board? And why might we go and contact the school board versus, say, going through the school?
Honestly, I think that the best way is just to reach out. You know, like Arthi was saying, we are accessible. We are moms in many cases, or dads, or grandparents, just like everybody else. And our job is really to engage with our constituents and do what's best for the taxpayers and students and staff in our district. And so I always recommend, if you want to know more, if you have a question, reach out. I mean, I'm pretty sure that the majority of the around 5,000 families in our school district have my phone number. And of course, my dog's barking now. Or my email is online, and I have social media. I am very responsive on social media. So I think it's really just a matter of reach out and let's talk. You know, it may take a little bit of time because this is an unpaid, almost full-time second job for me, and I'm sure it is also for Arthi. But it is, it is something, you know, I do work full-time, but I meet up all the time, as much as I possibly can, with anyone who wants to. So I would just suggest, reach out. Because I do know, you know, that we are representing our taxpayers, and we are dealing with people's most precious things, their children and their hard-earned tax dollars. So I understand that, and I think, again, just reach out.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo that. Thank, yeah, Heather, Heather is super accessible. I know that. I call on Heather a lot, trustee to trustee. I'm like, hey, what are you guys doing at Eames? So yes, I can attest, she's extremely responsive, and I've always appreciated that. Yeah, so I, and I think there's a burden on trustees too, right? Like, you know, people will reach out to us, but we've got to reach out to them and know that we're, let people know that we're accessible, and we want to hear what they have to say. And so, like, if I hear someone say something during public comment, for example, that piques my interest. So like, at a board meeting, we're not really supposed to engage on the, like, with speakers on their issue, but we can ask to put that on an agenda item. But there's nothing stopping me from emailing that person later and being like, hey, you told me the story about your student and the experience your student had with their special education teacher or whatever. Can you tell me more about that? And so I do that quite frequently because they have one minute to give their whole life story, you know? And there's always more to it. And I'll tell you, like, I'm a data person, so I look at a ton of data and stuff like that. And I'm sure Heather does too. We all kind of have to do that as trustees, looking at student outcomes. But like, it's the stories that people tell me that really, like, keep me up at night sometimes, you know? We went through, like, some really traumatic votes in the last couple of years with school closures and things like that. And I, you know, I learn a lot from what people tell me, and I try to take what they tell me and kind of put it through this sort of filter. You know, it's like, okay, no, let's synthesize that with all this other stuff I'm hearing, and then try to come up with, like, translate that into policy somehow. And, and that's kind of the job of trustee. So if you don't, if you're not listening to people constantly, even if you disagree with them, you're not really doing your job. Like Heather said, like, you know, we do have to focus on the kids at the end of the day. And the way you do that is you listen to kids, you listen to their parents, you listen to the teachers that work with them. And we've got teachers who are really forthcoming. We've got counselor, I just had a meeting with a bunch of counselors recently who kind of like shared, like, wow, we're spending more than half our time doing non-counseling duties. Okay, now I can take that information. So now, when I vote on the budget, I can be like, hey, what's happening in the budget that helps, you know, protect our counselors? Like, maybe we can hire more cafeteria staff so that our counselors don't have to do that. You know, so that's kind of how we take the feedback we get and translate that into governance work. So it's very important to engage with us whenever you can.
So let me, so traditionally, like, as the non-parent over here, like, I'm frequently going for the email or like the, you know, usually the easy stuff. But I know that there are more ways to contact the school board. So I know that, you know, there's, in addition to, you know, calling or emailing or having a personal story, there are opportunities for public comments. Like, frequently, there's something that, you know, the school board is proposing or something that has come down from, you know, the state of Texas that trickles down through the ISD that you guys are often taking comment on. How valuable is the public comment during the school board meeting? Should someone wait until the public comment period pops up to either, like, you know, provide written comment or speak at a meeting versus contacting you in advance of that? Like, what, what is the best strategy?
So just a couple little tidbits. I know most school districts do have a, like, mass trustee email account. And for us in Eames, it's trustees@eamesisd.net. And that automatically goes to our superintendent as well as all of the seven trustees on the board. With that, though, if you do that, you send an email to that email account, only our board president is allowed to respond to that email. And that's something that's kind of frustrating to people because though, if, and if it's a hot topic, if we're getting, you know, a lot of emails about different things all at once, it may take a little bit of time because we only have one board president for that person to go through and answer all those emails. So it's sometimes frustrating for people because they're like, ah, why am I not hearing back? You know, like, why is no one answering? How come I'm only hearing from one person? Well, that's because that's our board policy. And that's the one thing about being a board member that's tough, is that, you know, a lot of people don't understand board policy, and it takes some digging in, or you have to call me and be like, why isn't someone so answering? You know, and then I'll happily explain it to you. So that's the one thing that is tricky, that there are rules that we do have to follow. And so I would say there's that, but we do have open forum. I always recommend reaching out personally to trustees before open forum because during open forum, we cannot comment on the things that we are hearing, with the exception of if they're on an agenda, then we can make comments. But if you're coming and you're wanting to talk about something that is not an agenda item, we can't talk to you. And we look like we're super rude because we can't respond. And so we're just sitting there staring at you like, that's nice, you know? But I promise, we're super nice people, and we'd love to talk to you, but we can't do it during that meeting. So that's why I always say, reach out before, or reach out after, or send a personal email, call, you know, something like that, that's a little bit more personal. So that way, we can answer your questions and get you the help that you need if it's something that we can help with. Arthi, do you want to jump in on anything else there?
Yeah, I do appreciate the, you know, the heads up sometimes. Not everyone has the time to do that, so that's cool too. As long as you're doing public comment, one thing I'm really grateful for, we had a while there where, I think we did, that people could only comment on voting items. You know, like, and so I kind, that was fine. But what I really missed was hearing, like, the general public comment. Because sometimes determining what's on the agenda is just as important as determining how to vote on an item that's already on the agenda, if you catch my drift. So, and sometimes the way I first hear about an issue in the district is through this more general public comment, where I'm like, oh my gosh, I didn't realize that this thing was a problem. And so that gives us a way forward and kind of researching that, and ultimately maybe turning that into an agenda item. So, yep, I would say anything. Sometimes I have, sometimes I have constituents who will email me a couple days before a board meeting. They're like, hey, Arthi, is there anything that you have a concern with that you think we should know about as a community? And I can rally folks up. And I always appreciate that because that, to me, is advocacy. And we're all, and like, I got started through all of this, through PTA, which at its heart is an advocacy organization. So that really speaks to me when people want to engage beyond their own campus, and now they care about the whole district. I really, like, I love that because that's how we get, that's how we make change in the right direction, is by people speaking out. So, so that's always a good thing. I think that's, I appreciate that as well.
Okay. We had a question come in through the chat about what the number for, the number of board members being in the same place before it becomes, without it becoming an official meeting?
That depends on how, yeah. So it depends on how many board members you have, but on both of ours, it's four. Four is the magic number to make quorum.
Got it. Let's see if we have any other questions in the chat that we've missed. Okay, I think that was all the ones that have shown up so far. Other things that we like to talk about here are more ways to engage. So I noticed that during, during the pandemic, we had more opportunities to watch meetings on the internet. And can you guys speak to how we can stay on top of the meetings? You know, it's always been a struggle, especially for the people that do have, you know, jobs and kids to be able to get to a school board meeting. So if you guys could tell us a little bit about your board meeting process, how often you meet, and like, what the, what the plan is going forward as far as, like, if, when we resume live?
So I'll go first. So we have a board information session once a month, and we have a board voting meeting two weeks later every month. The board info session is kind, is like when we do a deep dive into student outcomes and where we kind of do a preview of the things that we're going to be voting on. That way, there's plenty of time for the public to become aware and ask questions. It gives us plenty of time to ask questions and bring up issues so that we're not bringing up too many new issues the night of a board vote. So those are two meetings that happen every month, except for July. And then in between, we've got like retreats and workshops and grievance meetings. Usually, after each of our two meetings per month, we have an executive session where we might talk about real estate transactions, legal issues, governance issues that we really can't speak about publicly. So that's, you know, that's when we might be evaluating the superintendent and be giving her feedback. And so, like, those are all really precious meeting times, but it's a lot, and they can sometimes run very late. So, yeah. So, and, but for both of those big meetings that happen every month, the public is invited to provide public comment. And we sometimes have public there. And then on top of that, there's public hearings, which are mandated by TEA, the Texas Education Agency, periodically, for example, to discuss our STAR test scores. You know, our TAPER, it's called the Texas Assessment Performance or Annual Performance Report, the TAPER report. So we have to do a public hearing for that. We have to do a public hearing to discuss the action plans for, like, our campuses that get a D rating in any one area. So there's like, those happen periodically as well.
So in Eames, we do things a little bit different, but somewhat the same. And so we have a study session, and then two weeks later, we have an action meeting. A study session and then two weeks later, we have an action meeting, our regular meeting. At our study section, study session, we do not vote on anything. It's just where we, like. Arthi was saying, we do a deep dive into different things that we're going to be voting on at some point. Um, and that's really where we voice our opinions and. We don't always get along, even though people are like, oh, there's seven O vote, you know, always, there is both the same. Which is not the case always. You just have to watch enough meetings to see. Um, but it is the time where we hash things out and we really say, okay, I'm over here on this, I'm over here, I'm over here. And after several months, we work through it and come to the decision that's, that is best for our staff and students. And so we can have good governance and we do it in a respectful way. So that people don't, like, there's no yelling, there's no, you know, it's not, we don't want to be like the angry divorced parents, right? We all want to be working together to make it the best opportunities for our staff and our students. Um, so we, we do the study sessions and again, sometimes we'll discuss topics for several months before we ever vote on it. And then our voting meeting, our regular meeting happens two weeks after that and we vote on. Any number of items that happen there. We generally do all of our taper reports or um. Any kind of grievance in closed session, either on the front end or the back end of those meetings. So some of those can get long. But uh, again, we've, we just kind of do it every other week, but we do have also team building. That's always something that we do every year so that when we have new trustees, the, the team kind of learns different things and we have open meetings. Um, training, just so that everybody's on the same page and we know exactly how to govern our school district best. And we actually did go back to live meetings in September. When we decided that our teachers were going back in the classroom with kids, we wanted to do the same because we didn't feel like it was fair. So we have live meetings, only like three people showed up in person and it was in this huge room in our high school. And it was a, a very big undertaking um, and burden on our staff to set that up and keep everybody safe. So after a few of those, we went back to Zoom. Um, but from our boardroom and we actually just resumed. Um, we, sorry, we, we resumed our in person with an attend, um, with people being able to come. In person to give public forum in person again, uh, I think two me- last two meetings ago. Um, and then as of June first, we will no longer be on Zoom. For our meetings, it will be all live in person, but at our board. Our board. Next, one of our meetings coming up, we will be discussing how we want to proceed because. The rule is if you have 10,000 students or more, you have to broadcast on video. But we have seen that we have had so many people that are saying like, we love this, we want to be able to watch your video or your, your live. Meetings while we're at home from our couch. And I appreciate that. I had young kids and watched board meetings and. You know, I couldn't always go to them. And so I do appreciate that. And so our, our school board will be discussing, you know, what to do and how to continue. Um, but again, that's not up to just me, it's up to our board to decide that because we only have about 8,000 kids. So by law, we don't have to do it. So we'll see what happens. We'll keep you posted.
Excellent. So uh, and any, any other, any other things that you guys would like to share, like uh, you know, as far as being on. You know, a working board?
So. Oh, yeah. So I was gonna say. I ha- I can't let this conversation end without talking about, just talking a little bit more about the importance of equity. Um, and student outcomes. And one of the things I really appreciate about our board and our district in general. Is that we do talk a lot about equity. Um, and the nuance there, the depth, it's equity is not. Charity, right? It's really, you know, and, and sometimes we think of equity that way. It's like, okay, let's just make sure that everybody has what they need. Which is great to do that, but real, true equity, I think. Is when you are engaging the community, you're reaching out to the marginalized families and making sure that they have a seat at the table. And so that requires doing things differently. And so it's really the board's responsibility to define equity as a value. And then view everything that we do from our policies to our budget, to the curriculum. To the way we um, we just, you know, even the way the superintendent manages things, even though we're not supposed to, we don't manage. The district, but we can see if she's doing it in equitable way. Um, and so that I, I, that's what I think is kind of like an unwritten. Sort of thing that school boards do is you've got to take, you've got to clearly identify the values of the district. And then you've got to figure out a way to operationalize that. That's really hard to do when you have nine different trustees. With nine different life stories themselves, you know? And so a lot of times when you hear us disagreeing on things, um, at least in AISD. It's because we have different definitions of what equity means and what it can look like. And that's why it's so important to constantly be learning. You know, we, and you, you learn equity, I mean, like what. I, I've learned most of what I've learned about equity from, from people in my community, many of who are actually on this call right now. And so it, when you listen to the marginalized voices and you're like, oh, okay. I never would have thought transportation was an issue. Like we have this policy in our state. Where you can, the state will only pay for a bus if, if um, if you live two miles or more from your school, okay? Now you think about how that's so inequitable because that's fine for a family that has a car, okay? Or a parent that has a flexible job that they don't have to go to in the morning. What if you have, what if you're a parent that doesn't live, that doesn't have a car, you don't live on a bus line, you know, all this other stuff? Well, guess what? That kid is not gonna, that kid's gonna miss some school because if it's raining. Or if that mom has to go to work or whatever, there's no one that's going to be able to walk a kid to school and two miles is, is pretty far. For like a seven year old kid, right? When it's pouring down rain. So I'm really proud that our district this year, and then for next year, we're going to change some of our transportation policies. And reduce that to um, you know, reduce that radius. So we will be giving more, many more kids. Bus service, but the state's not paying for that. So um, anyway, all I have to say, equity looks a lot of different ways. But you can only really get it if you're listening to the people who are going to be most impacted by your policies. So um. So that's kind of like my, my closing thoughts, I suppose.
Well, well, speaking to that, uh, I mean, it's been, it's been a long year and, you know, uh, we finally made it to the end of the school year, but. Uh, what are you guys doing as a school board to kind of, you know, are you guys doing like a? Kind of postmortem of how, you know, this either digital hybrid year went as far as uh, from an equity lens, as it went to, you know. A lot of kids in the food programs, the, the digital divide was one of the biggest things. As far as, you know, when we went virtual, so have you guys been kind of, you know. N- now that school's over, are you gonna have like a deep dive to kind of look at how that worked? I know Heather was talking at the top of the call about. You know, just being able to fund such efforts to be able to, you know, provide the infrastructure for digital is a strain on the district. So if you guys want to talk a little bit about that or what you might be looking at this summer for, you know, kind of a. How can we survive this year, but can we plan for the future?
Yeah, I just want to follow up with one more thing on the last part and I'll be brief on that. So one of the things, one of the reasons I would definitely highly recommend people get engaged. And to contact school board members with the things that they care about. Um, so every January, Eens ISD, we have something that we call the Board Summit. And that's when our board gets together with our superintendent. And the head of every department. And we call it speed dating because we get like just a little bit of time with each staff member. And we go through what they've been working on, what they want to work on, you know, what they think is important. And we get kind of just like a. Really fast debrief and we get a chance to talk to them one on one and it is so, so meaningful and important. It's one of the favorite things I do as a trustee other than graduation. Um, and so at that board summit, that's where we get to sit there and we define our goals and priorities for the year. And that is what guides everything we do. So we take those goals and priorities and we embed them into our district improvement plan. Our campus improvement plans, everything. And so that is also how we, we form our superintendent evaluation. So if you want something done and you don't see it on your, um, you know, the. In our case, board summit goals, priorities, which we have on our website, by law, you have to have your goals and priorities on the website. Um, and you think it's something that the, the district. And to note too, that it's not healthy to be switching goals constantly. So you. You're bored enough time to really work through those goals and priorities to make it uh, meaningful for the students and staff. But to go back to what you were asking now, um, about digital divide and all that. So Eens ISD has been a. One-to-one uh, campus or district uh, for years. We've had iPads for a very long time. We made that a district priority a long time ago and funded those through bonds. So our parents are paying for that via their tax dollars, which shout out to Austin ISD and Eens ISD for being the lowest. Is in central Texas, so you're welcome. Um, and then, but also, so yeah, we can't afford. And our teachers were too overburdened to go back and forth with the hybrid. And um, in person, that, that was just something that. We heard from teachers over and over and over again, we cannot do a blended model. We do not want to, we will quit. So we heard that loud and clear. Um, and then really we can't afford to implement anything else because we don't have the money to pay. For the amount of teachers that we need as it is. We depend on our education foundation and our community to help us fund even some teachers. So we just don't have the bandwidth, honestly. But also a lot of our community did not want that. We did have a, a, a small portion, but the majority of our community did want to be back in school. And I will stop talking now.
No, I'm so glad you asked this question, Jennifer. Um, so in ASD, we also, we were well on our way to one-to-one for. Our secondary students from middle and high school. We definitely had to speed things up. Um, but we were well positioned um, to do that because we already had a plan in place. So we were able to get the tech out to our kiddos. Um, the, a bigger, a big issue. Also is like the actual internet connectivity, right? It's one thing to give the hardware, but then it was like, okay, we got to make sure everyone has hotspots now and. Our hotspot's really the, the best thing to do. What I would love to see is like subsidized. Uh, broadband access for school districts. So we've got to make sure we've got to continue to advocate for programs like E-Rate and all this other kind of stuff. So by the way, that's the other hat we wear as trustees. Heather knows because I see her at the Capitol all the time. Um, is we've got to fight for stuff at our state Capitol and sometimes even at the US Capitol. Um, to, for support for our schools. And so. So that is definitely an area of concern. I'll say in Austin though, we have a lot of families who really like. Who have really enjoyed the online learning. Um, there have been some bright spots. In fact, we, I was talking to our, um, the head of our parent support specialist, um, Leonor Vargas. She was telling me a few months ago, like she had a, a dad. Who was like, you know, this is the first time I actually knew what my kid was doing in school because we've got parents who are sitting with their kids. We've got a lot of English language learners, um, students. And so they're, they're coming from families where. Um, the parents may not speak English, right? And so, but, so they're sitting side by side with their kids. So there are some unintended. Uh, benefits of all of this. And I hope we continue to grow on that and really have. Less of a deficit perspective, more of an abundance perspective. And so like, wow, how can we actually use this? To the technology to bring our students' cultures in as part of the learning experience. So I, I'm really happy to hear that there is a House Bill 1468 that just um, passed today. So, you know. I don't know all the details, but it seems like we will still get to get some funding to continue virtual learning. Um, for the next school year. I don't know what it's going to look like. Um, and now that more kids are getting vaccinated, hopefully, you know, that's going to help our situation too. But. You got to think about kiddos who are unable to take the vaccine. And I'm sure if I were a parent, I would still want my, you know, with a child with a, who's immunocompromised. I'd want them to stay home a little longer too, but we'll see what, how, how that all rolls out.
Got it. So, so we've talked about a couple of issues that, you know, definitely, you know, are things that, yes, go to the school board about that one. So. Like, how, how do you kind of decide which, which, which goes where? Like, you know, if it's, if it's on campus. Is that, is that principal? And then if, if it seems like it would be bigger than campus?
I always say.
School board trustee?
I, I always say it's like a ladder, right? Your kid is, you know, at the bottom of the ladder to start with. Your first step is your teacher. Um, then if you don't get the answer that you need or the clarification, then you go to your campus principal. Um, and then from there, elevate it to your, um, maybe there's. You know, as somebody else that you want to talk to, I don't know, it depends on what the structure is at the district. Um, and then the school board trustee. So, or you know, you can skip all those people if you really want, but ha- half the time, I'm going to say, have you talked to your teacher? Have you talked to your principal? Because those are the people that really are going to make those impactful changes for you or answer those questions. Whereas if I do it, then it's like the backwards thing and that could take even more time. So, um, I always suggest going from the bottom up. Um, except if it's something that, you know, is like, we need our district to work on this, this is a very broad thing. Then bring that to me, you know, if it's something that you think I should see, you know, as a summit goal, priority. And you're like, why isn't the district seeing this? Or something like that, then I would say just bring it straight to me. Or if you just want to have coffee so that you know, a board member, then call.
Yeah, and so I, I agree with Heather. A lot of times, you know, we'll have to say, well, this, have you talked to your kid's teacher? You know, have you talked to the principal? But the, there, this is like the constant um, tension with school boards. It's like. Um, our role is governance, it is not management. And there, we actually do have. Every school district, Eens has a policy, AISD has a policy, every school district has a policy that's online. And if it's, if it falls under a policy, then it's a school board thing. And if it doesn't. Then it's a superintendent, principal, teacher issue, generally speaking. So if you have a problem with like. A student's dress code, that goes to the board because the board creates the dress code policy, okay? But if it's like a teacher dress code thing. That goes to the superintendent. We don't, that's not part of our policy. So like, you kind of have to get, it's, it's taken me a couple of years to figure this out. So there are just some things that fall into one bucket and some things that fall into another. And you just, if you don't know, then you just gotta, you just gotta ask. Um, and so that's kind of, there is a distinction there.
Got it. So. But I think we're all very accessible again to just say, so if you don't know where that line is and who you should ask, that's fine. Ask us and we may send you back to somebody else, but we're happy to have that conversation.
And, and it's really interesting. So like, we're all, all, we're all about to approve our budgets for next year. And so even though we say like, the school board doesn't do. Like operational stuff, if you think about it, a budget really is like the ultimate operations. Guide for the district. So I always think that we do, but you know, that's kind of a different story. That, that's kind of like, if I feel like there's management things that I really want to see changed, I save it for the budget talk. Because like, that's when we actually can, that's where we can kind of get away with it. A little bit because, you know, if we want to see more money put into bilingual education, for example. That's the time where we could talk about it.
So uh, we had a question that came in um, about what moved both of you to serve on the board. Did, did both of you come from PTA? And, and work your way into the board that way, or did you come into school board from another arena?
Uh, so yes, I actually am a former PTA president. However, Eens ISD does not have PTAs. We have PTOs and booster clubs. Um, so that's a little bit different. Although the advocacy is still very similar, the work is still very similar. We just don't have that national PTA association. Comes along with our parent groups. Uh, but yes, I got involved when, actually I was a teacher first. I taught first grade. And so I was on our PTA as the T in teacher, uh, when I taught. And then um, when my kids went to school, I got really involved in PTA. I've held pretty much every single volunteer job. You could possibly have in a school except for treasure because that is not my gift. Um, and so I uh, just got really involved. And then. When I started going to board meetings when I was PTA president, I was like, oh, this is how this works. And then. Got really involved in advocacy at the Capitol. And I was like, all right, this is the way I start making changes. And so here I am. Um, I will say, I, I think everybody comes in as a school board member with an agenda. And you kind of have to figure that out that, oh, I can't just do this for this reason. Like. You have to be there for all of the students and for everyone. And so you have to put all of the things that you came in guns blazing and kind of to the side. And just really govern and do what's best for everyone. So, you know, I do think that if anyone is thinking about running for school board, it's so important. To figure out what exactly a school board member does so that you can do it the right way and for the right reasons. But yes, that is why I joined and I am just passionate about public education and making sure that students get what they need from public schools.
I love that story, Heather. That's the first time I've heard it. And so I, I think for me, so I also have this in common with you, Heather, I started my career as a teacher. So I taught bilingual fourth grade down in Donna, Texas, down in the valley for a couple of years. And so my whole career actually has been in education. I'm a program evaluator, so I work a lot with like college access and National Science Foundation grants with universities and school districts. And so like, this has always kind of been in my blood. But I also was a P T A mom and I think what finally for me, what finally made me decide to run was first, like, people believed in me and they asked, they asked me if I might consider it, which is really like, I don't know, like, I was like, really? You think I can do it? Okay, let's give this a shot. But other than that, like the passion is there, like I was, I was like, why are, why do we see so many disparate outcomes for our students? Why is it that our black and Hispanic students continuously are, you know, going to prison at higher rates? Why are they going to college at lower rates? Why do we have generational poverty? You know, what can we do? I mean, everyone says that education is a great equalizer. Well, it doesn't seem to be. Like, maybe that's the potential, but that's not the reality that I'm seeing. And so I wanted to just kind of get in to the system and kind of help figure this thing out and figure out how we can make sure that we have high expectations for all students and equitable opportunities for all students. And so, I mean, that probably is what drives most people. I mean, many people that I, many of the trustees on A I S D's board anyway is like, they want to see better outcomes for all students.
Got it. So we had a question come in to the chat about how exactly do school boards hold superintendents accountable when they aren't fulfilling their commitments?
I can take that. And so every year, the superintendents have an evaluation. And that is based on, or should be based on the school district's priorities and goals. And each district does that differently. I have come to find out. And I'm actually working on a project surrounding superintendent evaluations right now because it is vastly different. Everywhere you go. And one of the things that happened in House Bill three is that they required some specific goals to be added to that. But that doesn't even work well for every single district because there's each district, we have about 1,200 in the state, they're just vastly different. So really just goes down to the district, you know, having an evaluation tool and having a meeting as trustees where we all get to have input to say, okay, the superintendent is doing this, not doing this, you know? Do we need to give them more time to improve? How do we work with them to express like, we need you to do this a little bit more? So we do that once a year. And then the superintendent, you know, either does it or doesn't do it. So I think that it's a tricky thing and it's hard because, you know, in A I S D, there's nine, in Eens I S D, we have seven. Getting that many people to kind of give guidance is tough because you can't say, well, some board members want you to do this. Because that's confusing. You have to have it in, in really actionable metrics so that you can show, okay, let's look at the data and and say this. And some of it is hard, you know, like a lot of the D E I work that we're doing is really difficult because we're like, well, what metric can we show that it's working? It feels like it's working, but what is it? You know, so it is, it is a little bit hard and sometimes subjective, but we do try to have goals that make it a little bit more clear to the superintendents so that everyone knows what to do and how to do it. That's probably clear as mud.
That's pretty similar in A S C two. So like every year we approve a list of about you know, 20 or so metrics that we will judge the success of the superintendent on. In addition to that, we have another document that kind of measures the more like people skill planning, you know, just like how collaborative is a superintendent, how, you know, what is the commitment to? I can't remember what all the things are, but that, those are things that are harder to quantify. So we actually have like a rubric, which I really like. So that we can give feedback on that because the superintendent's job is not, we're not a business, right? So it's not just about the widgets we're putting out there. It's about like, how does this person sort of live the values of our community and collaborate and really create an environment where people want to work and thrive and feel safe and all that kind of stuff. Like, there's a lot more to it. And so that's how we kind of capture some of that. And our new superintendent, Dr. Ellie Zalde, is really good about communicating with trustees very regularly. So I meet with her one-on-one every single week. I have an hour with her, which is like a great luxury. And so like, that's my opportunity to, you know, share concerns that I might have, you know, you know, it's been a really hard year to be a first-time superintendent. So, you know, I do give her a break a lot of times, you know, like when people are complaining about this or that, I'm like, look, you know, she's got a lot going on here. So, you know, but if if there's something that I feel like is violating, like one of our principles or values as a district, I'll bring it up in a way, you know, and, you know, we talk, we talk it out, just like you would imagine and and, you know, so that, that, so there's a lot of that formative feedback going on as well. And I would hate to have nine bosses. But, but she does and she, I think she kind of has figured out a good system to hear from all of us regularly.
Once a week is a lot. That's a lot of meetings.
Well, that's, that's as for board officers is once a week. And I think for everyone else, it's once a month, which is still a lot more than what we had before, but I think it is awesome.
That's good.
So we're about to wind this up. Did you guys have any additional questions for Arthi or Heather?
While we're waiting, I would just like to say that my time here was just for me and I was not speaking on behalf of the Eens I S D school board. So I just want to make that very clear.
Ditto.
Yeah, I'll make sure to put the disclaimer in when I post this on YouTube. And I will let you guys know that our next speaker is going to be Laura Jaeger. She's going to come back again and talk about understanding government education at state level. We'll get a little bit of a recap on what's happening in the ledge. Ledge is just now wrapping up, so we'll see what will happen in this next week, but she'll be back to talk about that. And the school, the State Board of Education. And as I mentioned before, you'll find our previous sessions on YouTube and I will make sure that all session attendees will get a follow-up message that will have a kind of a little link sheet on, you know, things that we posted today. So we have a question here. Does each school offer talented and gifted opportunities? If so, when do parents find out to ask about those?
So that's really more of a management issue, but I appreciate that. We actually have a presentation on gifted and talented tomorrow night at our board meeting. So tune into that and we'll make sure that to get that answered. But yes, to answer the question, yes, it's offered at every campus. I'm not sure about the schedule though, but I, I'll, we'll find out tomorrow night.
Yeah, by law, every campus has to offer gifted and talented. And in Eens I S D, we did make twice exceptional district priority going forward too. So those are kiddos that are gifted that also fall under the special education realm.
Got it. Any additional questions or do you guys have anything for, to close out the school year or anything that we, we should keep on our radar for the summer?
Thank you for bearing with us, crazy trustees during this insane year because it has been one that I never want to go through ever again. And I know that pretty much everyone feels that way. So just thank you for being patient with us as we navigated all of this with our our communities and our staff and our students because it was insane. So and thank you to the league and to you, Jennifer, for having us tonight. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I want to, you know, echo the thanks to the league again for always, you know, shining a bright light on our schools. I want every single, like this legislative session has been really hard for education. And I just want to say like, please pay attention to charter schools. That is a huge, sorry, my dog. That's a big thing. I'll just say like, at least for Austin I S D, just Google Austin Council P T As advocacy. There's a Google group and that's a great way to just kind of get plugged in to some of that state level advocacy issues that are happening because that we spent half of our time trying to deal with the mess, honestly, that's coming out of the state legislature.
Sorry, I didn't mean to catch you off, Arthi. In Eens, we have Eens Advocates and there's a Facebook page. Same thing, since we don't have a P T A, that's our, our group that we advocate through.
Okay, I'll make sure that that will get into the resource page as well. But yeah, thank you guys so much. It has been the longest march of 2020 ever. I, I personally sent many an email and note out in my district with regards to wrapping up the 2020 school year and starting the 2021 school year. So I thank you guys for your service. As, as we said in the beginning, these are, these are unpaid positions. They are doing it out of the goodness of their hearts for our children. So thank you so much for attending and I'm going to wrap it up unless there's any other questions left. Yep, that's it. Well, have a good evening, everybody, and have a good end of the school year and let's get ready for 2020, 2021, 2022.
Thank you. We survived the year. Thanks, y'all. Thank you.